I will call the council meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Belief. I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have one thing under Ms. Lane.
Under Ms. Lane? Do we hear a motion to approve the consent items? So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'm sorry, I wanted to pull the MUC minutes of March 26th.
March 26th, MUC minutes. Any other discussion? Okay, we will approve the consent items minus the March 26 minutes of the Municipal Utility Commission minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Councilman Dock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember DeBleek was there, but I also sat in the audience. They had a very nice presentation from the CPA firm of Conway, Dothan, and Smeizing. Darren Ogdal and Wendy Martin were there for that company. Just want to draw your attention on the second page. It indicates it was noted that a number of policy issues should be addressed and updated. And I think that's an important thing to keep in mind as we're going through the current situation, that there are some policy decisions. Didn't get into the minutes, but when they talked about the 7 percent increases that we have experienced, my question to them, was it necessary? And their response was, yes, that it was, from the auditor's perspective. So I'd move to file the MUC minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the MUC minutes of March 26th, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the resolution, for the possible resolution of approving the contract with Flaherty and Hood.
It's not a hearing. Not a hearing.
It's not, I'm sorry, it is not a public hearing, Mr. Mayor. It's simply a, an agenda item. I can present the agenda item if you wish.
Would you please do that?
Sure. On January 26th, the city issued RFPs for city attorney services due to the retirement of longtime city attorney Rich Ronnie, who just completed 37 years of service with the city. The city did receive five responses to his proposal, and the city council interviewed three of the proposers. And on March 22nd, the city council did approve the appointment of Flaherty and Hood of St. Paul, Minnesota, as city attorney and directed the city administrator and retiring city attorney Rich Ronnie to finalize the contract with Flaherty and Hood. You have, you have received a copy of that, a copy of that contract. That contract was reviewed by Mr. Ronnie prior to his retirement. It has also been reviewed by Chris Hood. And I would recommend that you approve that contract with the hourly rate, the general hourly rate for municipal matters is $105 an hour. And I would call your attention to page two, which spells out all of the fees in detail in the contract. And I would note that the city has a budget of $197,000 available for legal services in 2012. And so my recommendation is that you approve the contract with Flaherty and Hood for city attorney services and appoint Chris Hood and Robert Scott as primary legal counsel for the city.
I would introduce the resolution doing so, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to approve the contract with Flaherty and Hood for city attorney services and appoint Chris Hood and Robert Scott as primary legal counsel for the city and to authorize the mayor and the city administrator to execute the contract. Discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for being here this evening. Where are they?
Chris is right here and Robert is.
I met him earlier. Thank you for coming. Throughout the contract, Charlene, I noticed that it's, the term "city" is used in there. The city will, the city may, the city will help. I'm assuming that they're referring to the city council, the city. Is that the definition of city in there?
I think it is the entity of the city. It could be city council, it could be city staff, but it is the entity, City of Wilmer.
Okay. And looking at our flow chart from the annual budget, I notice on there that the legal department is directly below the mayor and council, so I'm assuming that's who they work for.
That is correct.
It is for us.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? We have received the motion and the second for the approval of the contract with Flaherty and Hood. Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Can we have the, Charlene, would you?
Certainly, I will, I can review the next agenda item as well. It is very similar to the last agenda item, but again, as part of the replacement process for city attorney, Rich Ronnie, Rich Ronnie used to provide both the prosecution services and the civil services to the city. The decision was made after, after the same RFP, the RFP process that I just described, to separate those two services. And as you've just appointed Flaherty and Hood to be the, to be the city's general legal counsel. The decision was also made to appoint Anderson Law Offices and Mr. Tom Anderson of Wilmer, who is here tonight, as the city prosecutor. And his fees are, the monthly fee for the, from April 1 through December 31st of 2012 would be $8,917 per month. And a full schedule of his fees is also seen on page two. And I would point out that I did also give you a revised contract. Mr. Ronnie was working on this contract with Mr. Anderson up until his retirement on Friday. And there is a change, a slight change in the fees. This is on page, bottom of page two and top of page three. And it is the portion that describes and detailed the software and other expenses that would be incurred for each charging. And so those are listed in the contract as actual cost, and then other expenses also are listed as actual cost. And it describes that in greater detail. So that is the only change to the contract you received this evening from the prior contract. And again, I would recommend that you approve the contract with Anderson Law Offices and appoint Tom Anderson of Anderson Law Offices as the city prosecutor and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the contract.
Also move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract with Anderson Law Offices and appoint Tom Anderson of the Anderson Law Offices as city prosecutor and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the contract. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. And I understand that all the attorneys are here. Would you please stand up and be recognized? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may ask a question on the, at whose discretion is it whether or not we have them at meetings? Is that something we're going to discuss as a council or a staff recommendation? Because some meetings, we may not need them to travel out here and that, will we be discussing it, or again, as a staff recommendation, knowing what's on the agenda?
I know that our city administrator's been in contact with the attorneys. I'll let you answer that.
I think that is, you know, I think that is the city council's comfort level at this point. The city council has indicated you wish to have them present at your meetings, and so they will be present at your meetings.
Unless we?
Unless they're, you know, unless they, you know, we certainly can, we'll certainly evaluate that, I think, both the administrator and, and certainly Mr. Hood and Mr. Scott too. I mean, what is a good use of time and a good use of dollars to do that? And would bring a recommendation to the council, and then the council can make that decision on whether they're, you know, physically present or by conference call, or how we wish to do that going forward.
And then I understand the MUC has requested they be there at every meeting?
The MUC has, and again, they, they will be present for those meetings until the MUC makes a different decision or provides a different direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move into the scheduled hearings. Is there some, I will open the hearing for the city's application for Small Cities Development Program funding through Minded. Sue, would you please come up to the microphone?
Good evening.
Good evening. Put her chest to the mic.
Can you bring the mic? Oh, okay.
Would you, just for the records, identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Sue Johnson, and this is Dale Slatter. We're here representing the HRA regarding the Small Cities Development Program. Jill is unable to be here tonight, so she's given me the information that she wanted you to review. I'll answer any questions, or we will answer any questions if we can. Basically, we want, we are requesting that you support the resolution for the Small Cities Development Program and approve a cooperative agreement between the City of Wilmer and Raymond and resolution with the Small Cities Grant Condition findings. And they have this information, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What we'd like to do is continue the project. We have done some of these before in the past. We just finished with one for the southeast part of town, Wilmer and Panok. The owner occupied target area, I do have a map of that.
And I would point out to the council, the maps of the target area are, are in your packet with the Community Development Committee Agenda, so with each at the rear of the packet, but there is a color map that also should show you those things.
Yes, the color map actually shows the lines on here that, for the target area. The, we would have both the owner occupied in the southwest part of town, and that would be from Pacific Avenue southwest to First Street, Wilmer Avenue, Seventh Street to Candy High to 10th Street. Also, the commercial rehab would be downtown, and that is in the yellow area of that map. We also are adding a new phase to this project, which is the rental rehabilitation air, for the target area as well, of the southwest region of town. I can give you an idea of how many applications we have right now, pre-applications, if that would help. For owner occupied, we already have 22 pre-applications for Wilmer. And for the commercial pre-apps, we have 18. And also for the number of units in the residential rental, as of today, we have 20 units that have put in pre-applications for that. I guess I'd just open it to questions if, if we can help with anything. I don't know what more information we can give you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so the public is, is, is open to ask questions or comment or whatever you'd like to do. Hearing done, we will turn it over to the council for questions. Councilman Ammon.
Hi, thank you for being here tonight. Are there any income guidelines, anybody that's requesting this information, or requesting being part of this grant?
Yes, there is. For the owner, owner rehab, there is income guidelines for that. And there's three different tiers. Dale could probably speak to that more, but there are tiers and income guidelines for that, and it goes from low income to a moderate income to a higher-low income. And that is all been spelled out in the pre-application information for each family size. And then the, the money is divided up accordingly from that.
And how do you monitor the, I know you had the income, or rental guidelines on the rental units that were up for rehabilitation. How do you manage to enforce or review the income, or the rental guideline limitations that they're able to charge for those families?
They would have to agree and sign an agreement for those rental units to stay at that level and go only up according to what the market rate is for this area. The owners would have to agree to that prior to any, any funds being given to them for this.
And that was my next question, you, who determines that and how do they determine it?
That is set by the Section 8 Guidelines for rental vouchers, and Jill could answer that probably better than I do, but it's, it is basically county-wide, that that is figured out from the Section 8 program.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Anderson, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming. The previous ones that we've had, have you used up all the money? Did they?
Yes, we, it's all gone.
Okay. And just, just a comment, I think some of the work that you've done, done downtown has been just spectacular, so I certainly hope. This is a competitive process to get this grant, no, is it not?
It's very competitive. There were very few that were actually, what you do is you send in a, a letter at first asking if you can be considered, and then you're invited to do a pre-application and then invited to do an application. So we were very fortunate to be invited in for a full application again.
Good luck on that.
Thank you.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming. So the first resolution is for support of Small Cities Development Program. The number of people that applied, was it, was it 84? And there's, they're only going to give out 17 grants, is that what I understand?
What we're, what we're planning to do, according to the rules of the program, what we can put in for a grant application, we're looking to do 14 rehab for owner, owners in town in Wilmer, and then there's 18 in Raymond.
I mean, that's not what I'm, my, my.
Councilmember Christensen, I think the answer is that there were 70, there are 73 applicants, and the state anticipates funding 25 to 30. At least that was what Ms. Bengston said at the Community Development.
Okay, that, those were the numbers I was looking for.
Okay.
73 applied, and they're going to give out 25 of them?
According to Ms. Bengston at the Community Development Committee, when she, when she was there to discuss it, that she, that the state anticipated funding 25 to 30 of the 73 applicants being considered.
Okay. Well, I will move the first resolution that these, Wilmer will support the Small Cities Development Program.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to support the resolution of a small cities development project in the city of Wilmer and, in the city of Wilmer, do we have to include Raymond in that?
In the first resolution, it is just to support the Small Cities Development Program, and the subsequent resolution will be City of Wilmer and Raymond.
Okay. Discussion? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Sue, for coming. Who decides how many applications can be gotten from Wilmer and from Raymond?
It depends upon the funding. It's on a first, first come, first served basis. And depending upon what, what financing they need to do their, the rehab work on the house might free up some money, some might take less than others. But we go on a first come, first served basis and start that way to decide who, who starts the project, and then we work backwards with the money, basically. If there is money left, then we will use that to do more of the rehabs.
So you can't use it all in Wilmer, you have to give some to Raymond, don't you?
It's divided up in the grant itself. Raymond gets a certain portion of the money, and Wilmer gets a portion of the money.
Okay, so who decided that, then?
Jill and the people that are writing the grant, direction that we got from, from deed itself.
Okay. And the city of Raymond has approved this already, too?
I think they did. I can't speak to that. They did?
All right, thanks.
Councilman Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Number one, why isn't our technology working tonight so that the people that watch could observe that part of, that we're talking about? I think we need that, I think we need that at every meeting, the technology.
Okay, we'll speak to the proper people about that.
Yeah, we will get that taken care of for the next meeting.
And then I just want to mention that this came through our Community Development Committee meeting, and it was noted that the program funding has decreased for this program from 20 million to 13.8 million, so that's a huge drop.
It is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion?
Councilmember DeBleek had us.
Councilman DeBleek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question, Sue, on the applicants when they apply, is there a minimum or maximum amount that they can be, apply for receiving the grant? I know it's income, income.
There is, there is maximums they can apply for. We also have some leverage funding that they can apply for as well. And it depends, it depends upon what category their income falls into, but they could get up to as much as 50 percent. Isn't that the one? Dale, Dale deals with that a lot more than I do, so. How much is the maximum they could get from the small cities?
Yeah, the maximum that they can, they can be, get under the grant?
Can you go to the microphone?
Dale, you're going to have to go up to the microphone.
For the residential part, its average is 15,000. It's not written in stone that that's all they can get. Just say they got like a $20,000 rehab project. They can get 15,000 from the small cities and the rest of it from a different entity, like AHP program or something like that.
Thank you. Okay. I know this, this program has been real, Councilman Anderson stated earlier, it's been real beneficial, and we've put a lot of, a lot of good use out of it, so, thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. The next resolution would be approving the cooperative agreement between the city of Wilmer and the city of Raymond. So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution, approve the cooperative agreement between the city of Wilmer and the city of Raymond. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. And the third resolution is the SCDP Grant Condition findings. Move to approve.
Sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the SPCP Grant Condition findings. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. We'll move into the second public hearing of the consideration of the petition to vacate Harold Avenue Northwest. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council. The proposal to vacate Harold Avenue Northwest came about in the course of reviewing properties that would be slated for assessment under the 2012 street program. Unbeknownst to any of us at City Hall, the city did have a public street that cut through the block where Northside Park is, and one neighbor has enjoyed the use of that property for quite some time, as his driveway is constructed across this property. The street will not be built, it cuts through a city park, and good planning would dictate that it not be built as well. The Planning Commission has approved the resolution to proceed with the vacation. There's really no reason that staff could offer to not do it. There are no reasonable alternatives, other than to leave it the way it is and to forego taxes, but the city would also have to come up with the money for the assessments across that 70-foot right-of-way as well. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution granting the street vacation as proposed.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to request to vacate Harold Avenue Northwest. Discussion? Mayor, did we close the hearing? I'm sorry, we have to close the hearing. And now we have a motion to. So move to, hold on, you just closed it. I just closed the hearing, so now we have to have the motion to. Move to.
Correct. Public comments.
You had a motion, did you get a second?
I believe so.
Mr. Peterson, we have a motion and a second to vacate Harold Avenue Northwest. Discussion? Councilman Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, would this have been considered an alley in years past, or not?
No, it was never intended to be used as an alley. It was originally platted to be a public street, and for whatever reason, was never constructed. And then the city purchased the major portion of that block and built Northside Park that spanned both sides of that street, and quite frankly, used up street right-of-way for park activities as well. It was all public property, even though some of it was plotted as right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Yanis.
Yes.
Just one comment. Did you call for public comments during the?
I did not.
Perhaps we could reopen the public hearing and call for, if anybody in the audience wants to testify.
Okay, suggest to me what I should do.
Reopen the public hearing, call for public comments, and if there are none, then close the public hearing.
Okay. I will reopen the public hearing to vacate Harold Avenue Northwest. Are there any public comments? Did you want to speak? You can ask the council questions if you like.
Maybe, or she should tell how the property is divided.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
Do we close the public hearing from here?
Well, I think, give Mr. Peterson maybe an opportunity to explain how the property will be divided, and then if the property, then if, that way, if the residents have any questions, they can still ask those questions as part of the public hearing.
The way the property is divided following the vacation is that one half of the right-of-way would be assigned to each side of the street, to the property owners on each side of the street. There are residential properties on the east half of the block. Each of the residential properties on either side of that right-of-way will have an increase to their property of 35 feet of right-of-way. The other 35, or the other 70 feet in the west half of the block will be assigned to the city, as the city owns property on both sides.
Was that understandable to you? If you'd care to speak or ask questions or whatever, we can certainly do that, otherwise I will close the public hearing. Okay. Public hearing is closed, and I will open it up for discussion to the council. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, I'm, I'm a little confused on, on the 70 feet. You say we're on, on the east half. The 35 feet will go to property owners on, on each side of that? And will it stay as a, an easement through there, or will that become part of their property?
It will become part of their property. There are no utilities that run through that area, so there's no need for the city to retain any easements through there. It, it will be a cost-free grant of 35 feet of property by whatever the depth of their lots are to them.
Okay, so theoretically, then, they may see an increase in the valuation of their property next year to reflect that additional 35 feet by whatever the length of their property
their property is. That would be expected, yes. Okay, I'm clear. Thank you.
That was the last question was what I was gonna ask Bruce also, so they're aware of any changes. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Whoops, did I close the public hearing?
You did.
You did, sir? Couple of times. All right.
Say, Bruce, you mentioned two properties, since there are actually three properties, I would pick up the share of that property.
Let me look at the drawing again, perhaps there is.
According to my map, there's one residential property to the north, and you're right, there are two on the south side of the street. One is unbuildable and not built on at this point. I'm assuming that probably belongs to the property owner on LA Avenue. So they will gain a hundred and two feet of, I'm sorry, they will gain thirty-five feet of depth to their property by ninety-five feet of width. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Now I think we do a roll call.
Councilmember Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone scheduled to speak at the open forum?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor, but we will check.
No, there is no one scheduled to speak at the open forum.
Hearing done, will consideration of the fire contract with the Wilmer Township.
I'm sorry, I think the Community Development Committee is the next agenda item.
Oops, there we go. Jumped ahead of myself. Community Development, Councilman Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Development met on March 29th. Those present were Councilmember Dockin, Christensen, DeBleek, and Tim Johnson, staff Bruce Peterson, Charlene Stevens. The mayor was also in attendance, Jill Bankston, the HRA director, and Steve Reinquist, the EDC director. And Laura Becker was in attendance, but her name was not included on the minutes. Item number one was public comments, and there were no public comments that were offered. And number two is Small Cities Development Program application, and this is for information only, and we just dealt with it. Jill Bankston, HRA director, presented information about the latest Small Cities Development Program grant application. The program is intended to be a continuation of the 2009 grant, which provided commercial slash residential rehabilitation in the target area shown. The current application anticipates the following activities within the city of Wilmer: eight commercial rehabilitations, fourteen owner-occupied residential rehabilitations, and seventeen rental rehabilitations. Additionally, the application provides for activities in the city of Raymond, which would include eighteen owner-occupied residential rehabilitations. There was no action required of the committee because the council is scheduled to conduct a public hearing at the April 2nd meeting. It was noted that the program funding has decreased from twenty million to thirteen point eight million. The state anticipates funding twenty-five to thirty of the seventy-three applications being considered. In 2009, the grant award was for eight hundred thousand dollars. The current application is for one million seventy-six thousand dollars. The committee briefly discussed the process for determining the boundaries of the target area. Item number three was EDC funding request policy, and this was for information only. Steve Reinquist, EDC director, was present to explain their guidelines for handling funding requests, and we have an attachment. The EDC budgets ten thousand annually for community activities. All requests receive committee review. If recommended for approval, the request is considered by the EDC Operations Board. It was noted that in the past, five thousand annually had been contributed to the EDC, to the Community Marketing Coalition. Item number four was downtown plan update. Staff provided an update on the downtown planning process. A revised draft plan is nearing completion. The committee reviewed the proposed plan elements, and that's also an attachment to these minutes. The anticipated project schedule moving forward is as follows. Planning Commission review, April 11th. Public meeting to discuss the plan, April 18th. Community Development Committee review, April 26th. Council review and ordinance introduction, May 7th. Public hearing to adopt the ordinance will be on May 21st. Again, for information only. Number five, John Supper Club, for information only also. Staff presented the most recent inspection report for John Supper Club rehabilitation project, and that's an attachment. It has been obvious for some time that Mr. Kudrowski would not meet the council-imposed deadline of March 31st. Staff said they would continue to push Mr. Kudrowski to complete the project in a timely and workman-like fashion, and I think, Mr. Mayor, you indicated that you had stopped by and visited the project?
I have, and there seemed to be considerable improvement in what he was doing there. I think he was making some progress.
Okay. And the last item miscellaneous for information only. Councilmember Johnson informed the committee that he was aware of banks renting foreclosed homes to their former owners. It is not known if these properties are being registered in the rental housing inspection program. Staff said they would prepare a document notifying local banks of rental program responsibilities. Due to the number of loans sold on the secondary market, there are many mortgage holders that don't have local ties, and notification would be extremely difficult. And then the second part of item number seven is Councilmember Christensen offered some comments about the planning commission meeting of March 28th. He expressed concern about the hearing process conducted to consider the Islamic Society mosque request. He suggested that the planning commission post their review criteria so that those in attendance have the ability to structure their arguments or comments. He also asked that the commission chair explain notification requirements to the individuals in attendance at the hearings. And unless there are further comments, Mr. Mayor, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for March 29th, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And now we move into the consideration of the fire contract with Wilmer Township. Is there someone to explain that?
I think either Fire Chief Kelvin or Mr. Halliday is prepared to review that.
Kelvin.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, you have before you the renewal agreement with the Wilmer Township. They are one of the two townships that is serviced by the Wilmer Fire Department. Wilmer Township is a fiscal year of April 1st through March 31st. The new calculations are before you with the fire cost formula as shown there, with the firefighter hours of last year, and the new market values received by the county auditor. Following our age-old formula, the new dollar amount is twenty thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-four cents, and it is staff's recommendation that you approve this contract for the next fiscal year.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract with Wilmer Township and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the contract. Discussion? Councilman DeBleek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering if Rich had an opportunity to review this before he retired?
He does not, sir. He drafted it and reviewed it many years, and all that we have done is change the dollars by the changing valuation and changing firefighter hours of the previous year. So just math changes. We also did review it, and it looked fine. Okay. You did the.
Councilman Amen.
Question, on the formula that was arrived, regarding the city of Wilmer firefighter hours of six thousand three hundred and seventy-six hours, does that include all training hours, not just service hours called, correct? And then it mentions that Wilmer Township firefighter hours of ninety and Dover of ninety-four, for total hours, six thousand five hundred and sixty. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember, remember, Amen, that is correct. Those are the total hours, and again, you have to understand that the training hours benefit the city of Wilmer in addition to the townships, and so there's a contract between them with the Wilmer Township and the Dover Township. And the only thing that's not included in that is the volunteer hours that the firefighters put in. So firefighters are not paid for all of the training they attend, so it only counts the paid hours, is what it counts.
Okay. I guess my question is, and the paid hours of firefighter hours includes many, 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 many hours of training. I'm guessing, I'm assuming maybe four thousand, three thousand, or a half?
Yeah, about three thousand hours.
Just to train them?
Sure.
And we are billing with this agreement based not on those hours, or proportionally, those hours are not being billed or included in the formula for Wilmer Township and Dover Township. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Yeah, they're not.
It's disproportionately.
Yes.
Between, let's say, three thousand firefighting hours of Wilmer and the ninety and the ninety-four exact firefighter hours to the townships.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
So when you take the, when it's a true comparison, they're getting a heck of a bargain. And the taxpayers are subsidizing the townships for the training hours.
Well, I believe there's two ways to look at that. I think that it's advantageous for us as a city to have this contract to get the reimbursement for that time. You know, we are providing them a service, and that service is something that, through the cost formula, has been taken into account. And we've used this formula for a number of years. Since I, since I started here in 2000, it's been used and even previous to that. The formula was one that's been developed, and it was developed by the League of Minnesota Cities, the townships, and then various fire department organizations that came up and said this is the best way to do it. I did speak with the attorney sitting to my right, and he said he's familiar with this and he's seen it in other cities as well.
Well, just because it's here doesn't mean it's right. I'm just saying it's really not a fair comparison of costs versus values, the city. And that proportionally, these hours for the training, which is a big part of our budget, doesn't seem, doesn't seem like we're getting reimbursed the proper rate for what we're, what we're giving them as far as service, the quality of our firefighters, the training, the equipment. I know all that is broken down, but I, I don't agree with this formula. I think you're, I think you're underselling it, and I think it should be reviewed.
As a, I appreciate your comments. You know, not too far to our north, that discussion took place, and actually, right now, there's two fire departments that are located about a mile apart, based on the argument that you just made. And I don't believe that that's cost-effective to either the township or to the city, once that happens. And I feel that the formula that is here is a good formula, and we certainly can look at it if that's what you'd like us to.
Well, I'm just questioning it. I personally don't, from what I see right now, without a lot of discussion and wasting everybody's time, I don't agree with it. I don't think it's correct. I think it's proportionally way out of line. Now, that doesn't mean that we're trying to gouge the other townships for their services because they're part of our county and they're part of our community too, is one. But I just don't think that we should be subsidized, and the taxpayers in Wilmer should be subsidized, and the townships for the fire service that we provide, and a very good quality fire department. I'm repeating myself, so I'll just leave it alone.
If I may, tie on to Councilman Amen, and what is the history, past history? Have we had the same type of an agreement for many years?
This agreement has been in place for a number of years, yes.
Many years.
Councilman, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another way to look at it is if you divide the ninety hours into the twenty thousand five hundred and forty bucks, it's.
Yeah.
Two hundred and twenty-eight dollars an hour that the city is receiving for that, and I don't know what it costs us to send people out to these fires, but it seems fair.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no?
No.
That motion carries. We will move into the consideration of liquor license renewals, off-sale, on-sale, club on-sale, and wine on-sale, three point two liquor licenses.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, you have before you the list of establishments requesting renewal of their current liquor licenses. Our fiscal year on those are April 25th to April 24th the next year. You have the recommendation of staff of the sites listed by each category. Behind that, you have the memo from the chief of police showing you the owners, the general manager on site, that must be, one of the two must be in Candia High County, and it addresses the service calls to each of those establishments. That's for your review, at your leisure, but it is staff's recommendation that renew all of these liquor license in their appropriate category, and it must be done by roll call by our city charter.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve all the licenses by roll call vote. Excuse me, do we do all the, all together?
Yes, sir.
One vote? Roll call, uh, discussion, I'm sorry. Councilman Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to compliment staff on the new format that they use for setting these up, breaking them down by originating department, action requested, guiding principles, agenda items, background and justification, fiscal impact, alternatives, and this is really well done, and congratulations to the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still working to improve the process a little bit more than this, but this was very good, and it was brought to us as a, it was an example that the chief of police had found, and so we're still working on the format, but this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Yep, very well done.
Councilman Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank Mr. Wifels for the information. I do have one question, the one on the number of calls at the Walmart stores. I'm assuming those weren't all at the liquor store. It says two hundred and thirty-six calls.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bruce, that is the calls to those addresses, so that could be a car accident, that could be child locked in the car, it could be a theft inside the store. It simply goes by address, so to place a value on there and look at that and have concern about Walmart, I certainly would not be concerned. They have not had any liquor violations, and I would not prevent them from getting a license.
So these calls are not liquor oriented? I mean, there could be anything like a car accident in front of the store.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you again.
Any further discussion?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. With that, we'll move into the announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Anderson?
Finance Committee will meet Monday, April 9th at 4:45.
And Councilman Reese? No meeting scheduled, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Dockin?
The 12th at 4:45, Conference Room 1.
And Councilman Amen?
Labor, April 11th, Wednesday, 4:45, Conference Room 1.
And moving into miscellaneous, Councilman Amen, you had a comment to make?
Just one, one question. I know we get busy in our day-to-day functions and weekly and monthly functions, and sometimes we have to be re-informed, and I like to be re-informed on the sixteen or eighteen-year-old process we've been in on the discussion of Grass Lake. And I understand it's slow, it's been a long time, and I wonder if we could get an update, somebody could update the council and myself on where we are, what we need to do, what are the action steps we need to move forward. We're almost there. I'm just wondering what's the holdup.
I have some. I have some information, if you have some.
I do not have information for you this evening, but we can certainly prepare information and provide that to the council at another date.
Well, I understand that, you've been meeting with the county commissioners, and county commissioners are going to be part of this project, too. We have to collaborate with them to move this project forward, but the land acquisition is almost completed. That's not an issue, and that wasn't the issue many years ago. The funding is there. The issue of the pumps to relocate the water off, once it gets above, above the flooding level into another ditch, I believe it's called Peach Creek, because it's going to go into another, another area there. A lot of the money, that area's been diverted, and I'm just wondering if it's the issue of the pumps, the pump costs, the operations, or if it's the engineering department that's holding it up, but after 16 years, I'm getting a little impatient.
If I may just add to that, is that I understand that there are some, some big changes that have taken place in the last year, and so with that in mind, I think I'll take the advice of the city administrator and say that we should get up-to-date and accurate information.
Definitely. Thank you.
Can we do that?
We will do that.
Thank you. Any further, Miss Wayne? Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.